Alrighty, if everybody could take a seat, we're gonna get started. We didn't know how many people were gonna show up, we knew somewhere between three and 300. That was our only true indication, but we're happy to see everybody here. If you're warm, there are fans up here on the table, they are free, please take one, there's a few left. We ran out, obviously, very quickly on the sheets of paper that show what all the comments were that came out in our poll. If you would like a copy of it, my business cards are on the table, please feel free to take one, email me, and I will send you a copy of that. Alrighty, if we're ready. So, some of you were here before, so some of this is gonna seem familiar. Okay, a brief history of Desert Lakes Golf Course. In 1971, the city acquired the land that is now the back nine from the BLM, with the condition that be used for recreation for perpetuity. The front nine was originally owned and operated by the Alamo- Alamagordo Country Club, and in 1984, they gave that front nine property to the city of Alamagordo, with some deed restrictions that say that it must be used as a golf course. We found that that might not actually be true, those restrictions may have been lifted, we're actually doing research on that. So, the golf course, some of you may or may not know this, but it's approximately 150 acres. The front nine is approximately 64 acres, with the back nine being approximately 86. There's four ponds on the front nine, seven ponds in the back, and they hold approximately eight to 10 million gallons of reclaimed water. And our grasses and greens, current greens are bent grass, and most of the grass on the fairways and things are Bermuda. So, a brief history of our current contractor, GNL Golf. They became our contractor in 1992. The golf course operate, or they operate the pro shop, and that includes the lessons, the cart rentals, tournament organization, high school program, and they also operate the 19th hole. GNL Golf has worked hard to develop and build the game of golf in the town of Alamagordo, and we're very appreciative of that. Some financial facts that people may not know. So, the golf professional and restaurant operate on a cost-sharing program. So, the annual fee, no matter what, we pay GNL Golf $30,000. The 19th hole restaurant, 95% of the revenue from that goes to the contractor. Pro shop sales, 100% goes to the contractor. Cart shed rentals, 100% goes to the contractor. Cart rentals, 60% goes to the contractor. Driving range, 60% to contractor. Cart trail fees, 40% to contractor. Green fees, 20% to the contractor, and annual pass fees, 25% to the contractor. So, what that looks like when you put it in a graph, is the blue is the contractor, and the yellow is what the city earns back on the golf course. So, this is the financial data for the last five years, this is our five-year average. So, the first green line is the average revenue generated. So, to make sure that everything is on the up and up, GNL Golf provides us all of the shared costing revenue comes to us, and then we give him back his percentage. So, that top shows all the restaurant, it does not include the pro shop because that is not a shared revenue. But that shows all the shared revenues, so that includes the restaurant and greens fees, things like that. The next line is what it costs the city to operate. That is the cost of machinery, seed, fertilizer, employment of operations staff. So, you can see that after 2020 and 2021, our operations went way down. That's when we, there, a decision was made that we no longer have seasonals or part-time. The next line after that, the green line revenue balance, is what's left after paying for our cost of operations, or our cost to operate. And the next blue line is the cost of the contractor. So, that, out of that total, in the top green line, that's what we pay that contractor, the contractor. So, the next, the red line is what our arrears is after all of that, in each of those years. The purple line shows what the city put in and then subsidy. So, most of that goes to paying the arreage from the contractor, and then any extra goes into helping with equipment, or equipment repairs, or emergency repairs, or equipment purchases. Deferred maintenance, cause and effect. So, right now, we have an issue where we can't affect the contractor's ability to generate revenue. So, that creates some issues. So, large and small projects are deferred, and we can't, we can't do them because we can't close down, you know, one side of the course, or large portions of the course at a time. So, you know, that includes everything from large seeding projects, cart path, rural restriction enforcement, greens replacement and conversion. So, it's a balancing act between what needs to be done and what can be done. Contention and conflicts between city staff and the contractor regarding what is and is not a priority in the realm of course maintenance. So, our proposal, and this is city staff proposal, is to take the management of the entire golf course in-house, at least for the next five to 10 years. So, the improvements could be made without conflict with contractor's ability to generate revenue, and enhance features to attract new players from all segments of society. The restaurant would still be, would still be leased out, and we recommend that that revenue share be adjusted to 90, 90/10. So, post irrigation, so for longest time, it's, everything's been based on, we can't do this, we can't do that because the irrigation system is falling apart. It's finally happening, the irrigation system is going in, so now we need to start looking about, beyond the installation of the golf, of the irrigation. So, one of the major things is the pond lining and re-lining and pond expansion. So, the lining is mandated by the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. We don't have a choice, and that has to be done. That's gonna take some tearing up of the course. And granted, the front nine is fine, it's the back nine that has to be done. So, we have ponds that aren't lined, and their lining has failed. So, we also have a greens conversion we'd like to do for burnt gas to Bermuda grass, per the master plan that was approved by the city commission last year. Beautification and windbreak projects with pollinator zones and pollinator-friendly planting, starting on the back nine to protect the greens from desiccation, and to bring color to the desert side. And cart path repairs. I think anybody here who's a golfer, or has been to the golf course, knows that our golf cart paths are, it's a little bit of a dukes-of-hazard situation if you've got any speed and you're going around the golf course. So, we wanna level them, and we wanna widen them as funding and space allows. So, we also wanna do driving range improvements. So, new, bigger, longer, taller nets, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but the nets are in really bad condition. We not only wanna fix the nets that are there, but we also wanna make them taller and longer to fully cover the side, but we also wanna add the third side to protect the golfers from the people on the driving range. We'd also like to introduce a new game that is more accessible. So, this is sort of a Topgolf-type activity. It's not Topgolf, but it's, it has those trackable stats, it's got training modules and all sorts of things that come with that. And because of that, we'd also, we'd like to make that free to the Alamagordo Public School, High School team. But we'd also like to create some more programs and events to appeal to the entire community, introductory games and events to get more golfers out there, introduce more people to the game of golf, maybe in some non-golf events. And we've gotten a lot of people that's commented about the Easter egg in community picnics and things like that. These are just suggestions that we put in our presentation because those are suggestions that's come to us from people who don't golf. It doesn't mean that this is what would happen, but if things like this happened, it would be carefully curated to not interfere with game of golf, it would be scheduled things. So, how do we get there? It would require a reimagining of the golf course. A new marketing strategy to encourage new players, encourage golf-adjacent activities, new driving range features, activities and events for the whole community, and carefully scheduled and curated, carefully scheduled and curated to maximize fun and minimize impact on the game of golf. So, we'd also like to see extended hours at the restaurant. We'd also like to see extended hours at the driving range should we do these improvements. Keep fees reasonable to reflect that the fact that this is a municipal golf course. So, we have no big grand scheme to increase fees or go crazy there. We'd also like to do a new golf cart fleet, if we take it in-house, it would have a new golf cart fleet. So, and again, the new driving range features with, that's similar to Topgolf. This is sort of what, a prototype of a building, or an example of the type of building that we envision for the driving range. So, we also get a lot of questions about what staffing would look like, there's lots of concerns that we'd have, the pro shop would be understaffed. So, again, the restaurant would be leased to a contractor. The current model is the 95/5. We propose that it goes to 90/10. And then city staff would manage and operate the pro shop. So, we'd have full, four full-time pro shop cross-trained to assist with golf course maintenance. One of those would be an admin assistant, which would help with being a clerk or cashier. Five part-time pro shop, also cross-trained to assist with golf course maintenance. One full-time PGA golf pro to provide lessons and retain a percentage of those lessons, and one full-time general manager of golf. So, in the ideal world, the staff that works there would come to work for us. That's what we'd like to see, because they know everybody, you know them, that's what we would like to see. We can't make them apply, we can't make them come, but that's what we would like to see. So, our future financial data, this shop, this pro shop is in-house and the restaurant at revenue sharing at 90/10. So, our first year, we kept everything very low. Our costs are very high because we, with the current contract, we have to buy out all of the inventory of the pro shop. We'd also have to buy the fixtures, things like that. So, there's a, there's a lot of, some unknowns there in what our costing would be, but we think we kinda have it figured out. And I also wanna make sure everybody knows, we're not trying to generate revenue. What we're trying to do is make the golf course be somewhat self-sustainable so that the subsidy that goes into it goes actually into repairing and making improvements to the golf course. So, our second, third, fourth year, they go up. That's with, also the first year, the restaurant would stay at 95/5 to incentivize the restaurateur to make improvements, come up with a menu, find out what people want, those sorts of things. So, second year, that's with the restaurant at 90/10 revenue. That's with us having everything kinda figured out. We don't have all the expenses that we would have, that we do in the first year. And third and fourth year, that's when the new driving range, we hope, would be going online. So, that's where you see a jump there in revenue. So, future revenue, this is the visual of what that would look like. So, the first blue line is our revenue. The orange line is our cost of operations. Green line is the revenue balance after we pay our cost to operate. Blue line is the cost of the contractor, which is just the restaurant contractor in this. And then the purple line is our after-paying contractor, so, and then, so that was our, kind of our expected subsidy there. So, as you can see, by the third, fourth year, it starts to go down. Again, we're not trying to generate revenue, we're just trying to make the golf course a little bit more self-sustainable so that the subsidy that goes into it actually goes into doing improvements to the course and developing new programs. So, how do we make this reimagining work? All of these plans will only work if we invest in the course, this will take time and money. We can invest in the course by improving our ponds, repairing our cart paths, doing greens conversions, and adding the beautifications through plantings and landscaping. And also, all of these things will only work if we invest in our community. This will take time and money also. So, we can invest in our community by adding a Z-Trans stop out there, so everybody has access to the golf course, offering lessons at low or free cost to those who are less fortunate, holding family-friendly events, charity and fundraising tournaments, and free golf or driving range days, and more. There's, there's a lot of programs out there. We've been talking with people from the National Golf Trust, they have a ton of great ideas, they specialize in municipal golf courses, and so, they've, they've shared a lot of really great ideas with us. So, how do we find the funding to make these things happen? So, with the ability to manage the course coming, coming in-house, we are eligible for grant opportunities that we aren't currently available, or aren't available to us. By developing more inclusive programming for youth, women, and minorities, we also gain more state and federal recreational opportunities. This statement got a lot of attention last time. It's, we're not saying that we don't have women, youth, or minorities out here. We have a great number of people who fit all of these categories currently at the golf course. What we're saying is that by developing more programming, we are eligible for more funding. There are grants out there specifically to develop programs for those folks. The current amount of subsidies could be put towards the course rather than paying a contractor, and the work on the course could proceed much more quickly without interfering with the contractor's ability to generate revenue. Addressing some concerns, so after our last meeting, we had a lot of folks come to us, phone calls, emails, personal visits, and I appreciate every one of them. So, private carts were, were a big deal. We proposed a grandfather carts in from 2024, 2025. No new private carts, or maintain the current private carts. Again, we have suggestions, but we don't get to make those decisions, the commission makes those decisions. So, we have ideas, but we also adjust our ideas according to the feedback we receive. That's why I'm very happy that everybody's here, this is why we're having these meetings. It's, it's so that we can get this feedback, because we knew people liked their private carts. We didn't know you liked your private carts that much, so that's good information to have, we, that's, that's what we need to know. Annual passes and costs in general. Passes and fees would remain static at least for the first year, and allows us to collect data and statistics to show us where we have gaps in our service, and where improvements need to be made. So, basically, it tells us who's golfing, when they're golfing, all of those things. So, if we see that we have got gaps, and there's people not golfing, we can fill though, we could figure out ways and do programming to fill those slots. Concerns that will increase costs, well, fees would remain low to reflect that we are a municipal golf course. We're not looking to do country club fees, and golfers will continue to get a good bargain. Some have expressed concern that the city is trying to make a profit, that is incorrect. What the city is attempting to do, as I've said before, is to make the golf closer, golf course closer to being self-sustainable, and this can be achieved if we reduce our cost of operations and increase our recreational offerings to the wider community. So, some have asked if the city has qualified staff that can operate a course. Well, for one thing, and Mr. Grant Doubts helped interview this person and choose this person, but our golf course superintendent, Michael Bradley, actually has over 30 years of full-course operations. He has an agronomy degree and all sorts of things, so. We, I actually have his bio on here later, so I'll just kinda skim across it now for this part. So, at our last meeting, Mr. Doubt stood up and he said that he had given us a proposal for a management contract, and he had. We did not include it in our last meeting because it was our proposal for taking it in-house. But we've had an overwhelming amount of people contact us and ask if we could do this meeting and include his management proposal. So, we are doing that. So, the management proposal consists of the city proposing, or purchasing all of the, all the inventory and paying all the costs associated with stocking and operating the restaurant and the pro shop. The city would lease all contractor-owned furnishings and equipment from GNL Golf, and the city would receive all revenue generated by the restaurant and the pro shop. The following slides will demonstrate what that looks like. So, the proposed management model, as proposed, so the revenue, so going, basing it off of the last five years of revenue, as reported to the city, does not include the restaurant, is $640,000. So, that's green fees, cart rental, cart path, those fees. So, the restaurant rental, our restaurant revenue as proposed is about $985,000 a year. Other income as proposed would be about $195,000, so that's pro shop income. So, the total income would be about $1.8 million. So, the equipment rental cost, the management model using all the current equipment, the equipment rental would be about $3,000 a month. Carts, that includes the range cart, beverage cart, service, gas and marshal carts, all garage equipment, range balls and baskets, all the IT equipment currently in use with the exception of one piece that he has there in the proprietary information, all club repair equipment, golf shop displays, hangers, et cetera, and the rental clubs. So, the cost of the management plan, as proposed, would be roughly $1.6 million. So, that's the cost going through five years of financial averages, what it costs to supply the restaurant, what it costs to stock the pro shop, what it costs to, all of his cost of employment that he included in his proposal, all of those things. So, it's cost of goods, cost of other expenses, management fee, and the equipment rental. And then our five-year maintenance, so if we, we remain the same in our five-year average, cost of, for us to employ our folks and buy our equipment usually costs around $663,000 a year, that's our five-year average. So, the cost then to operate the golf course would be $2.2 million, almost $2.3. So, to give you kind of the visual, expected revenue, 1.8. Cost of, for the city, for our folks on the maintenance side is 663. The revenue balance would be 1.5. Cost of the proposed management plan, I think I have a, I have a typo there somewhere. Cost of the management plan is 1.6, so then we're behind 464. So, that's nearly double what we are usually a rear after paying the contractor now. So. So, the forecast and the management model that we were given assumes operating stays static for the duration of the contract. There's no indication of the plan to appeal to the community as a whole, developing new activities to attract new golfers, extending restaurant and driving range hours to attract more patrons, no new carts, no new features, this model kinda maintains the status quo. The yearly arrears would be close to double what the current average is, and the course would continue to suffer as the subsidies go to pay the management company instead of being invested in the course itself. So, here is the management, here's the three options. The first is the current five-year average, this is what it looks like right now. So, the green line is the revenue, the orange line is the cost of the city to operate, the blue line is the cost of the contractor, and the red line is basically the balance after that. The in-house model on the second year, because that's when the restaurant goes to 90/10, looks like that. So, the green is the revenue, orange is the cost of operate, cost of contractor is blue, and the red is the arrears. The management model as proposed is the last one. Green is the revenue, orange is the cost to city to operate, blue is the cost of contractor, and the red is how much we're in the arrears. So, with all that being said, we'll get to the personnel biography of Mr. Michael Bradley. As you can see, he began his career in golf in 1989. I'm not gonna read through every single bit of, of his rather lengthy bio, but he has man, been general manager, manager, he has an agronomy degree. We couldn't find a more qualified person to be out there on the golf course. And I know people are upset because the grass isn't growing as fast as they would like, but the grass is growing, and we've had folks from all over tell us what, how good those look. So, this is my bio, 'cause I was asked to put on there. I've kinda been all over the place, I was a biologist by my early training and career, I was doing biology work before I became a biologist, and I have an MBA and an MPA. So. So, city commissioners, if anybody doesn't have their information, this is their phone numbers and their emails. We encourage people to contact them, you can contact me, and as I said before, my cards are over here on the table. If you would like to send me all of your opinions, I will gladly respond to every single phone call and email, ask Jason. If you are not sure what district you live in, this is the district map. Looks a little weird, but that's where we're at. The golf course is in District 6, just for anybody who was not aware. Also, again, with the did you know, the air temperature at the golf course is generally cooler due to the evaporative process of plants and greens found there. Your golf course produces roughly enough oxygen for 4,000 to 7,000 people. A golf course improves air quality of the city by filtering pollutants from the air and sequestering carbon dioxide. More women and minorities and youth play golf now than ever before in history. The game of golf has actually changed more in the last five years than it has in the last 50. Golf courses help to mitigate the urban heat island effect. And along with our golf, our parks, the golf course is necessary for the city to comply with NPDES regulations. So, that is how we get rid of a lot of our wastewater, because we're not supposed to dump a whole bunch of it out in the desert. So, the schools, the parks, and the golf course take on most of that water. Alright, so, I've heard lots of people grumbling and saying things out here, and so, it's time to put your money where your mouth is. I'm gonna have folks raise their hands, and I'm going to hand off the microphone.
Okay, first of all, thanks for showing up, everybody, we appreciate you coming out. We know the golf course is important to all of us, and thanks to Bindi, she's put a lot of work into this. They honestly believe that they can do a really good job, I appreciate that, I have a difference of opinion. I do have some, some concerns, especially about the management model that they presented. I would say that's been a big miss. It's not at all what I presented. The numbers are, I would say, questionable, but most importantly was the notes. It would be static unless the city, so the static, the idea that the management agreement would stay static. What I gave to you, Bindi, was one year, it was a one-year model of the difference between the city taking it over and a management agreement taking it over. It had no projections going forward whatsoever. The equipment rental was based on the fact that you needed that equipment for the one year of the model. Could it be extended further if needed? Yes, but that's not what we thought was the best. Buying, the city will have to make the investment in all the stuff we've invested in over 33 years. The cart fleet, they're gonna have to buy a cart fleet. Whoever comes in is not gonna buy that cart, not gonna use that cart fleet anymore, they're gonna get a new one, or, or demand a new one. So, they're gonna expect the city to have that, so those things will have to be taken care of. So, if it would stay static, would be, it wouldn't stay static unless the city doesn't do the RFP correctly and negotiate the contract correctly. Again, the information is basically on how to budget, not what the, what it's gonna look like going forward. Most management agreements either include an incentive clause, or an investment clause, or both. An RFP process would be graded based on those items, whether they were gonna invest, what kind of incentive, and what their fee was. So, bottom line, the difference here is I gave them a fee of $80,000. That was a rough estimate of what I thought would be the maximum that a management company would charge, okay? So, if you just paid all the bills, got all the revenues, you're gonna pay them 80 grand, that's it. So, there's a big misconception on the way that comes out. A management company would agree, some basic items in the, in it, the company and the city would develop a business plan together, any programs, additional additions, events, different things that the city wanted to do would be included in that business plan, and then a management company would execute that plan with their expertise, because this is all they do, is golf. They've got expertise in that business. After a business plan is developed, the budget would be then developed, and there are basic parts of the management company, which are, these are basic parts of a management company contract. We develop a business plan, then we develop the budget. The budget has the incentives in it to keep them moving forward and keep them trying to raise revenues slash cut expenses. So, that's my take on it, I don't necessarily agree with everything, I know there was, we had a lot of back and forth, but my intention was never long-term, it was a one-year model of the way it would look in the difference. And this here shows you that, that Stephen gave me. We would like to see the city move to, the commission move to an extension, and then a, an RFP to go to management. GNL Golf feels comfortable, I've talked with several management companies, myself, I have numerous PGA fellow I have numerous PGA, fellow PGA professionals who work in management companies. Now, I didn't know exactly how they worked until the last two or three months, and I've been investigating it a lot. I do believe it would work here in Alamogordo, and I feel relatively certain that any management company, the management companies I've talked to, they would absorb our staff. They would say, "We need you," and in fact, a couple of them have been adamant that if you don't stay, we're not in. So, I do believe that we would, my company, my people would be absorbed into their new staff. Regardless, I'm not going anywhere. It doesn't matter how the commission votes. If it does go in-house, I'll apply for the general manager's job. I don't believe Jason is going to go anywhere either. We both feel very strongly. I helped build this golf community. It's very close to me. It's important to me. So I want to see it put into another model, because the existing model won't work long-term. It just won't work. There's too much liability for an individual to go out in that direction anymore. So, the management model is the best way to go. Oh, by the way, 65%, according to the National Golf Foundation, 65% of all municipalities across the country are run by, either run or partially run by a management company. And the trend is moving, is going, 15% to 18% of the remainder is going to a management company. So, please share your opinions with the mayor and your commissioner, and let them know how you feel. But we're here to stay as long as we can.
Thank you, Grant.
Hello, I'm Dorothy Ald. I've been playing this golf course for 50 years. I started when it was a private country club, and then when the city took it over. So I've seen a lot in 50 years. I saw it when Grant first started to manage the golf course. But one thing I wanted to say is I noticed on your list, you talked about a lot of adult activities in Alamogordo. But golf is different from those. Because golf, you can play from three years old to 103. You don't have to be in physical shape to play golf. You can be overweight like me and play golf. But some of these other sports, you can't do that. And what I saw with Grant and Jason in managing the golf course, when they took it over and the city took over the golf course, is they did develop this golf course. They got involved with the community, with the tournaments, with our civil organizations for charities. They've raised a lot of money through the charities. You just listed a lot of the things that the city could do that they have already done. The programs, he started the junior program to bring the kids into golf. He's worked with Tiger Golf. He does have a wonderful reputation with the community. He has been an excellent manager. The golf course has needed a lot of money and work, and I want to thank the city so much for doing the upgrades that it needs. And I think we all know it's going to take a long time to get it back where it needs to be. And so I applaud you for that, because it is such an important thing. We are a retirement military town. The military doesn't have a golf course anymore. And I'm also a real estate broker, so I saw a lot of people move away from Alamogordo because the golf course wasn't what they needed. And so, I think Grant and Jason have done a wonderful job. I would love to see them stay. I think at this point, with the transition the golf course is going to go through in the next years to get it back into shape, of changing management at this point could be disastrous. It could be critical. If anything, I just encourage you so much to continue their contract until we get the golf course up and running, because I think a lot of the maintenance that you've done, once you get everything done, will be so much lower. And I think the extra things you said you could do, you could probably work with Grant to get those done too, until down the road, the golf course is up and running. It's not a big transaction. The second thing is the 19th Hole is one of our top restaurants in town. Very busy. If you contract that out to someone else, that could be disastrous too, because a lot of times, the cheapest is not the best. I think the city has learned that. The cheapest contractor is not the best. It's cost you over the years. It's cost you in lawsuits because they didn't do what they were contracted to do, because you picked the cheapest one. So, I applaud you. I thank you for everything you're doing. But I just think the change management at this time could be disastrous.
So, a lot of folks have the impression that we're somehow ending his contract. We're ending G&L Golf's contract. We have to abide by state procurement laws. His contract is actually ending. And we're not ending his contract. It is coming to an end. Regardless, even if this stays, as the commission votes for us to go to a management model or what have you, it's still going to go out to bid, and there is zero guarantee that Grant or G&L Golf will get that contract. And there's nothing I can do. I don't make that decision. I don't get to see the bids. That's hands-off. That's purely a purchasing thing. So, this isn't, please don't take this as a city versus G&L Golf, because that's absolutely not what it is. This is, we're at a transition period regardless. And this all started, we didn't just wake up one day and be like, "You know, it'd be really cool, let's do this." It started when we had some indications that Grant was looking at maybe getting out or cutting back. And so we started looking at things. We really started going through our own books and our own records and finding, you know, "Oh, well, look at our, we're kind of upside down in our costing versus, you know, what we can put into the course." This was never intended, and I don't want people to think that we're beating up G&L Golf, because we're not. This is, really is just about, this is a transition period, and everybody keeps saying that they want to keep G&L Golf. We don't have a say in that. We're going to put out the RFP if it goes that way, and it could be anybody. As long, we would write the RFP pretty tight, and it will be whoever bids on it, and they meet the qualifications. Purchasing follows all of the state procurement laws. They make that decision. That's not me. That's not Stephanie. That's not Michael Bradley. And it's not Grant Dalbs. He has the opportunity to bid, just like any other contractor does. So, I just want to make sure that everybody really understands that that's where we're at. And so, you know, we're not trying to beat up Grant. And we love Grant. I mean, we have, we have to. We're required by law. But, we do have, it is a little bit of a weird relationship, because we can't, he's got to make money. That's what a contractor does. And we don't begrudge anybody from being able to make money. That's why this is at the end of his contract. He's already on an extension. It's got to come to an end, so.
So technically not on an extension. The contract was frozen during COVID. So it's just making up those last few months. But what she's saying, what we're under right now is what's called a professional services agreement. And that is, that's basically, we're a management company, but we're in a revenue-sharing situation, where I do a lot, or a lot of the investment. All the restaurant is my investment. All the carts are my investment. All the range is my investment. So that's how you'd get to that revenue-sharing type of agreement. With, and that was 33 years ago is when we signed that. So, we could have asked them to go to bid for that again. But it's not, it's just not the way to go in today's world. There's nobody, I would be the only one that would bid on it. I can assure you of that. And I'd have to bid a number that would be worse for the golf course and for the city, just to be safe. So that kind of contract needs to be put away and not used. So it needs to go to a management contract or in-house. That's the only thing we need to deal with. I do believe in my heart that a management company would absorb our staff and take us on, and they're going to want to keep all the same things we're doing that are successful, but they have some resources that I don't have, that could bring things to the city that I can't bring as an individual, as a small company. So, a management company would be a wise move, because that's the direction, the nation, the industry is going. But it also has some resources that I can't provide, the city couldn't provide, because they're in golf resources. It's the economy of scale. They have all these courses in their portfolio, all these staffs in their portfolio, all these experts in their portfolio. They can bring those things to bear in Alamogordo and do things we probably couldn't do. For example, that Top Tracer Golf. There's some management companies that run those too. And they'd know exactly how to buy it cheaper, do it why, make an ROI that would make sense for the city. So there's things that a management company can do that G&L Golf can't. And anything the city wants done, if they think they're the only ones that can do it, no management company can provide it, and they will provide it with expertise.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you a question. Out of all of the pie-in-the-sky stuff that you're proposing over the next few years, what is your number-one goal for the golf course?
Our number-one goal for the golf course is it's a 10-year plan, because things take time. But our goal is to get this golf course to the condition that we are eligible to hold the state high school golfing tournament championship in Alamogordo. That's our number-one goal. So, if it's at that quality, it's going to be awesome for everybody.
And how do you do that?
Through time and investment, so.
What's the first thing you've got to do?
Well, our first thing is irrigation.
Let me ask you something. What do you think all of us golfers and the people that live on the golf course want?
We want a golffable golf course.
We want grass.
Correct.
Grow grass. That should be number one up there. We are going to grow grass, and we are going to get the course in decent shape.
And so, so, okay, I appreciate that. And you're not alone. We hear that very regularly. So, for the longest time, trying to get grass to grow was a situation. We have a 30-plus-year-old irrigation system made out of PVC. If anybody in here has ever worked with PVC, when it breaks, it doesn't just usually, if it gets old, it doesn't break in one spot. Your brakes run. So we are chasing leaks constantly. So now that our new irrigation system's going in, that's the number-one thing that's going to help us be able to get water where it needs to go and get the nutrients to the soil where it needs to go, so that that grass can grow. That has been the hardest thing. So, while we're waiting for all of this to happen, we're doing our soil samples and our soil testing to find out what nutrients do need to go on that soil to make that grass grow. So those are all things that we're battling. But now that the irrigation system is finally going in, the contract is ending, we have some big things that we've got to do to that course. Part one of those is the pond re-lining. It's going to tear up the course a little bit on the back nine. We know that. But this is our opportunity to get those things done, and we can move a lot faster if we take it in-house, because we can just say, "You're going to, it's going to be a nine-hole golf course while we get this done." Right? So, we have a plan. It is a plan, and I appreciate your input. We hear that all the time. And as the irrigation system goes in, we have a massive, massive reseeding project, you know, in the pipeline. So as soon as the back nine's done, it's a lot of reseeding. We know that we're going to lose some of the fairway grass just because of this going on, and we're trying to do everything we can. So, but we're, we've got a whole group of new folks here, and we're putting a ton of time and money into training our current staff. And we've got a person with over 30 years of experience in top-to-bottom golf course. And I know, if you haven't met him, I would, I question your logic if you are taking somebody else's word if you've not met the person and introduced yourself to him. Right. And the golf course, we went nine months without a superintendent and years of neglect. And so it's over, since he's been here, he's been pouring a ton of time and effort into that course. You've got to come up here, because whether you know it or not, you all are being filmed, and this is going to go on.
A few things to point out. I think number one, for those of you who don't know, this irrigation project that's going on is, from what I can tell, basically 100% attributable to former Senator Ron Griggs putting in the word here. And I am very thankful for that. Do you know what kind of shape we would be in without that? So thank you, Mr. Griggs, for your work on that. That may or may not single-handedly save this golf course. Thank you for that. Couple things on the presentation. You pointed out, again, that just from the public's point of view, from my ignorance point of view, looked a bit misleading, was talking about the current contract, I know it's coming to an end, but G&L Golf showing 100% of the revenue from Pro Shop sales. G&L Golf also takes on 100% of the risk in Pro Shop sales. I don't think that should be added up there in that whenever those golf clubs don't sell, that's a loss out of Grant's pocket. So those kind of things, showing G&L's making 100% of the sales of stuff, he's also taking 100% of the loss on some of those things. I think that's worth pointing out. Last thing I'll say, my concern, you said a few times in your presentation that the golf course is not looking to make a profit. I think that's a flawed thought. One of the, for those of you who didn't get the paper, one of the questions says, "The city has no business running the golf course. Contract everything under one umbrella. Course maintenance, 19th hole, and running the golf. This will incentivize doing what is needed to run a successful golf course." That was the comment made. The city's answer to that, "This has been suggested in the past. However, research does not show this to be true. The cost of a management contract is not fiscally responsible." We do appreciate your input. I don't know what research you guys saw that shows that. I would like to see the research on that. Any golf course, any big-time golf course we can name in this room is ran by a management con, by a management company, and ran well, because I think profit is a great incentive. If there is no incentive to make a profit, there's no incentive to pull those weeds on the side over there, because it doesn't matter. We've got a general fund we can dip out of or whatever. So that's a bit concerning, that we're not trying to make a profit. And I understand, we'd like to make money to put back into the course. It's not just a matter of we don't want to make any money at all. We don't want to make a profit necessarily. But I think just that, that thought process might be the seed to bad things in the future. So again, I would challenge you guys to think, what would happen to this golf course without our new irrigation project? Boy, it would be in a world of hurt. So again, thank you, Ron Griggs. But again, like I spoke last time at the meeting, it's just kind of some more skepticism than anything else. Whenever someone says this, and the response is, "Research shows it's not true, and the cost would be fiscally irresponsible." That adds more to the skepticism, so thank you.
Thank you. So, to speak to that, so, the reason the cost of Pro Shop is up there is mostly because people think that we get part of that revenue. So, I was just to show, so any of the costing and things up there, it just shows that he does get 100% of that. We don't receive any of that. And yes, he does have those costs, absolutely. I don't know what those costs are. I mean, I guess I do now, but I didn't want to share what his costs are versus his revenue. It was just to show, because a lot of people have an impression that there's more stuff being shared than what there is, and, you know, they don't know. So that was more for information than anything. So for the revenue thing, well, I'll go to generate revenue. The golf course is a recreational facility. Golfing is a recreational activity. In none of our recreational facilities, we work very hard in all of them, correct? To bring great programming and to give a good experience. If we wanted to generate revenues, in order to generate revenues, rather than just trying to develop the next generation of golfers and to bring more golfers into the sport, to develop new golfers, we would have to jack up our prices. That's not what we want to do. We are a municipal golf course, and we want to maintain it as a municipal golf course. So, we'd rather generate traffic than jack up your prices. So, that's my comment on revenue. As far as costing for the management plan, so what you need to realize about the management plan... plan is we do have to develop a plan, like how much all of the cost is. To run it through a management plan, we'd have to buy, buy all of, all of the cost of goods in the restaurant. We're basically paying, they aren't employed by us, but we're paying all the employment costs for those people in the restaurant and the pro shop and, you know, whatever other costs that are developed. So it is expensive. We don't want to really do it that way because it is heavy on the costing side and it's low on the return side. So, and we have looked at management models and they're all over the place. Some charge a little bit, but you have all of those costs and you do generate the revenue, but sometimes they, they set those costs kind of high, so.
That's where I'll, I'll add that maybe it should have said for our specific circumstance, that may not be available, but your answer was, management companies typically don't work, research says.
I, I, I admit that the answer was rather glib. If you read the rest of those answers, you'll see that my sense of humor may have kind of gone off to the left. All right. Anybody else have any questions? Oh, one at a time. All right.
I'm sorry. I just want to bring a couple of things up and reflect on what Dorothy said. You have to have a playable golf course in order to get the revenues, okay? We keep making excuses. I'm sure Michael's a nice guy, but we all saw that golf course go to hell when he took it over. Okay? You guys can say what you want, but another thing, when we talk about our golf community, okay, there's a lot of reason all these people are still playing golf in Alamogordo. And that reason's right there. He puts on events that still make us want to play golf here. So if you bring, if you bring the city into play, like I told you last time, the city knows how to screw a lot of things up, okay? I'm just going to tell you how it is. Let's look at the bowling alley, Cookie Factory. There's a lot of, I have a lot of examples, okay? Do you have something to say, ma'am?
I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. So anyways, when we have, when you look at the big picture, you need to look at how many people are still going to be playing at the golf course if it's in the shape it's in, okay? So I think we need to stop making excuses and really look at the problem over there.
Belinda, let me interject something right now. Mondo, I, I'm going to have to agree to disagree with you because I am 100% hold staff accountable. And if the staff is in here, they know I have no problems getting rid of them or not. I sat, when I get the conversations that Mike is the reason that the golf course went down, I sat with Jason, wherever he's at, and I sat with Grant. And I asked him, "When did it start happening? And what did you tell me, Grant? You told me it wasn't Mike's fault. You told me it started happening about COVID time when the world went to hell and all of our part-timers went on. Mike inherited a problem. He inherited, like Belinda said, you know, I liked Mac. Mac was great, but Mac wasn't doing some things. Then there was no superintendent. And it was underfunded 100%. I agree with Grant 100%. So to put all this on Mike is really disheartening to hear everybody that really, oh, Mike's right here, sorry, I thought he was back there, to really slam him because he really inherited a problem and he is working really hard and we're trying to give him the funding and sources that he needs. So I'm going to have to disagree with you on that.
Now, I agree with Mark.
And I understand.
I'm sure a lot of people agree, that's.
And I understand, but I'm just going to, some of the other things, the neglect of the golf course, I agree with you. I can agree with you in the condition of the golf course. I agree with you that what Grant's brought in, but I'm going to have to stop the conversation when you guys are blaming Mike because he's working 60-plus hours, so.
I'm blaming the city. I'm not blaming Mike.
Okay. But you just said that, you know, when Mike came in, it went to hell. So I'm just putting that out there.
You know, I, I know Pat, tensions are high. I get it. I actually wish we had this many people that cared about other things in the city as we do about the golf course. I'm super impressed with that. Unfortunately, you know, we're lucky if we get three people at a commission meeting, but I'm really glad you're here. I do take issue with some of this because I have to tell you, things have not been perfect in the past. I can look around here, I see prior commissioners, I see prior mayors in this room. This is not an issue that happened overnight. This is an issue that's been going on for a long time. I think we can all agree with that. Listen, I don't even golf, but I do have a golf tournament every year for a nonprofit that I run. And Stephanie will tell you, I'm driving around on a court, I know nothing about the golf course, but I could see that it was bad. And it didn't take a rocket scientist to figure that out. And I would say that was quite a while ago. And I called, and I, and it was a Saturday, and I called her on a Saturday afternoon and I said, "Okay, listen, I don't know anything about golf, but I can tell you there's some issues out here. It is bad and it doesn't, it doesn't take a professional to realize that there are issues out there." And, and we all understand that. And I think we can do the woulda, shoulda, coulda, this should have been done a long time ago. We're going to blame this person, we're going to blame that person. But, and Ron, thank you. Thank you for pushing that. But the fact is, the city is paying for the irrigation project. The staff is the one that went out and found the money for it and we're trying to fix it. And I do get a little defensive when I start hearing about how this was messed up in the past and that was messed up. Like, I understand that, but please understand that we're all here to fix a problem. I can't, we can't go back and revisit the past. It doesn't matter because it's the past. The fact is, we need to fix this. I've had long conversations with Grant. I think he can agree to that. I've had long conversations with Jason. We, we have to make a decision and, and we as a commissioner are not always going to agree. We as staff are not always going to agree. But I can tell you, as somebody who doesn't golf, I want that golf course to succeed because in my mind, in my vision, in my world, if that golf course succeeds, it only helps the entire community. I understand that it's more than just golf. I understand that probably very big business deals have been made at that golf court, right? Am I wrong? I understand that big decisions have been made there. I understand that, that people have memories of receptions and weddings and all kinds of things. It's more than just a golf course and I think we all understand that. But getting angry and, 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 and playing the blame game and telling everybody how awful they are and what a piece of garbage they are, okay, I'm paraphrasing, that does not help the situation. We need to be united on this. We all, if we didn't want this, we would not have this meeting. If we didn't want this, we would not be investing hundreds of thousands of dollars in the irrigation project. Everybody wants this golf course to succeed. And I take issue when I start hearing things like, you know, you want to bring in the family funds center debacle or whatever you want. Come on. Come on. We're doing the best we can. And, and we're trying and we can shake our head and say no all we want, but the fact that we're here right now talking about it means that somebody cares about it. And you don't have to agree and you don't have to like what we say, but I can tell you that this staff right here cares about this golf course. How we get there, we may not agree on, but, and listen, I had a conversation with Grant today. G and L Golf, I get the impression that one way or another, it's not going to be G and L Golf anymore. Correct me if I'm wrong, that that's not what, what we want anymore. The rest of it remains to be seen. But I just think when, 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 when we get this passionate about it and we start getting ugly, all you're doing is creating defensiveness, of course. Okay? So shake your head, get upset. I understand that, but please know that we want, okay, I'll speak for myself. I want to see that golf course succeed in a really big way. Believe me, I do. I do not want to see it fail. I think it's important to this community.
Thank you. I'm sorry, this gentleman was here first. I'm trying to hit everybody in order.
Thank you, mayor. That was a very good speech. And so I think we all are passionate about this. We want to make sure we're doing it right. So now we're going to take passion out of it and go to accounting. So on your five-year plan, you had the revenues of $1 million more if you guys brought it in-house rather than if G and L Golf or Grant did it. How did you come with a magical $1 million more of revenue in that?
Okay, so in his proposal that he gave us, he had all the expenses, the model that he gave us, he had all the expenses that he thought we would have to pay. So we used what he gave us. That's his model. So he had the cost of all his employment, all of his cost of goods for both the restaurant and the pro shop. We are not going to take in the restaurant. We propose, I don't feel that, that, that is something that should be contracted out to a restaurateur. They know restaurants. So the, the management model had all the costing of the restaurant involved in that too. And that is a hefty cost benefit difference there. And I would be happy, anybody who wants to see all the modeling that we did, I do have that. It's pages and pages and pages long. If you would like to see all that, please take my card and I will gladly speak to you.
But here's the revenue, just compare it. You had $1 million more in five years. How do you find $1 million more?
Okay, so in the first year, it was nine, the restaurant would stay at 95.5. Okay? So the restaurant gets, the restaurateur gets 95%. We only get 5%. So that's part of it. The second year, it goes to 90.10. So the restaurant generates a significant amount of revenue also. So that would come, that would up it. But we would also, it's also part of our developing programs and doing more because we want to have tournaments and events and all kinds of different things. So it's, a lot of it is our hard work also, but it's also catching our stride in the second year. Our third year would be when our hope is that the golf, the, the driving range, I'm sorry, the, the driving range would go online. So all of our studies and research that we've done on that, we've talked to people who have these all over the country, small municipalities, big municipalities, similar-sized municipalities, their revenue from the driving range increases exponentially just because those things are so popular. Because non-golfers love those things. I like to go hit a baseball. I love to go to the batting cages. I'm not a baseball player. There's a ton of people like to just go out there and bash balls across the driving range, but they are not going to go play golf. So the, and there's also, we'd like to do a, a small food and beverage snack bar type thing associated with that also, so.
Thank you. So that, that follows up, the second one was that you kind of said move faster. You, with some, you mentioned that and it was in the presentation on improvements and things like that. But wouldn't we just go into bureaucracy where you'd have to go to the commission? And wouldn't we run to a similar thing, but different, which should also bring the thing of what happens if we're not meeting revenue targets or estimations? Does that, I don't want to say, would that go into maybe having to ask for bonds or perhaps raise taxes, anything to try to cover losses? What's, what's the risk management plan on that?
So as you can see from our five-year average, what our, our subsidy is, so our, we already expect a subsidy. It's just right now, it's going to pay the contractor. So in the future, if we can reduce the amount of half-to-half subsidy, we would have that subsidy, we'd still ask for the subsidy to go into the course, right? So that's, that's that goal. I'm sorry, I forgot what your second one was.
The speed.
Oh, speed. So, okay, so for instance, so we talk about being able to do processes faster. I will give you a, for instance, golf course irrigation is going in right now. If it was under city management, we would have closed the back nine, they would have done the back nine, and it would have been done. Then we would have closed the front nine, opened the back nine, front nine would have been done. We are putting the irrigation system in one hole at a time because we can't not interfere with the contractor's ability to generate revenue. He still has to be able to get those rounds of golf around the course. And so we did talk about those things in early meetings and that's kind of been walked back a little bit with recent times, but that, so that is actually why we are doing it that way because that's how it was plotted out in the beginning. And so once it went out for RFP, we can't, it's, it's harder to change that because that's in their contract. But anyway, so that's, that's the kind of stuff. We can get things done on the course faster. That's, that's what I talk about, being able to expedite some of the processes. We have a bureaucracy now. We have to, when we get a grant, we still have to go through, there's a process that we have to do. We have to abide by grant rules. There's always going to be bureaucracy. Just right now, we have extra hurdles. And so that's, we're just trying to eliminate some of those hurdles so we can get this course to that condition that we're, that is our goal.
And the fail-safe.
So the fail-safe, again, okay, so target revenues, right? So even if we don't meet those, if we maintain the same average of where we're at right now, we won't be using any more subsidy than what we currently are in our two-year average or our five-year average, I mean. So, so it, it could potentially be, but that's part of our process is we want to develop programs, we want to do all these extra things to try to get, develop, because we have to, golf is only as good as the next generation of golfers. So we have high school kids golfing, but we need to develop other folks to be golfers. So.
My name's Dave Weaver. I've been a resident of Alamogordo for 16 years. I retired in 2009 out of Fairbanks, wanted a warm place with a nice golf course. Alamogordo fits the bill at that time. In my 16 years here, I spent nine years on the school board. In those nine years, we built three schools. When I left the school board in '20, we had everything in place for a new junior high. And that's because our board was very unanimous in the decisions we made in moving forward with that board. I think you need to get this commission totally on board on this project. You can't have a lot of dissension on there, it's not going to work. It will work so much better if you have everybody's support. I know we have a lot of golfers in here and I, when we did the first presentation, one of the things that really kind of gripped me was the top golf thing. How many golfers in here would support a top golf thing? Wow. I see three hands. That tells me it's not something that we think is real viable. And I tell you why. I've been to several golf, top golf, over the years. If we put one on our golf driving range, which is short to begin with, we've got probably 35 guys here right now who can clear the fences that we have out there on the driving range. And with the setup that you show in your picture, we're going to lose 35 yards of that driving range just with the setup that you have. The only way you can really make it work is take the entire parking lot and add it to the driving range to have enough distance for it. Or, I live in the townhouses right beyond the dri, the driving range, you could buy a bunch of our units and extend it, but I don't think it'll fit on the property that you have.
We're going to move the townhouses, David.
I'm all for that. So I've had conversation, I haven't talked to Mike about this because it has fallen on deaf ears, but every superintendent going all the way back to Mr. Berunda, I've had conversations about having a replacement sod program at our course. Was there any talk about that at all when this irrigation project came up to where we might have additional sod that we could use for replacement? It was, Mike? Because we have several areas on the golf course where we could have up to maybe six acres of sod being grown every other year for replacement?
About the area of 16 to 17 acres.
Okay, there's a vast area along number nine tee box. That's probably a full acre there at the back of number nine green. There's probably another half acre, but I could go on. There's a lot of areas. The entire area to the south of the 11th fairway could all be developed. It's, I'm sure that there could be some type of agreements done with the fact that it's natural land, but it could be developed into sod. And we would have plenty of sod replaced, to replace the areas that we have right now. And we would have had a much better course over the years, so. The last thing I wanted to bring up is your, your projections on your The last thing I wanted to bring up is your, your projections on your revenue. I don't know that you're, if you're aware, is, is Ronnie Junior here? No. Ronnie Junior is our, what's his title? Handicap chairman. After the meeting last time, I asked Ronnie, how many people are we down in the men's club right now? And at that meeting, he said it's well over a hundred. So you have a well over a hundred people who are really not supporting the golf course in the way that they have in the past. That's substantial. And so we need to look at those things and make sure that they're, that we can do something about them. Okay, Susan, I like what you said. I think I agree with you a hundred percent. We need not to be critical. We need to move forward.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. I guess I want to thank everybody for coming. You know, I'm kind of a new guy out at the golf course. I've only been here seven years. So what do I know, right? But the thing is that I get it, that GNL, you know, they're not going to probably be a player next year. You know, we're, we've got a choice between the city and a management group. And now we've seen the city's plan, and we all got questions about how they're going to make money and revenue and all those good things. But what I'd like to see is the next meeting where we have one or two proposals from a management company. You know, I don't know if you can do it. That's what we need to see. So, you know, if you could, you know, contact some companies, you know, and, and some of these people here probably, you know, they have contacts at these companies, say, hey, you know, this is what we're looking, what could you do for us? And I know you got to send it out for quote and all that good stuff, but maybe you could get somebody to come in and give a presentation and wow us like what they can all do, you know? And, you know, and I get it, because I see the problem with the city, you know, and like she said, we don't want to play the blame game. But you know what? We kind of have to, you know, okay? Because now if we're saying the course, you know, we can't do this on the course because of the contract with them guys doesn't allow us, who the hell wrote that contract? You know, I wouldn't write that contract. If my contract says, I can drive my car, but I only can take it to the dealership for oil change, I might want to change that contract. I like to do my own oil changes. Or I want to go to Walmart where it's cheaper, or whatever. If you write a contract, you got to look at, and that's the problem with the city is they're not golfers. He's a lawyer who, you know, wrote, wrote the contract. And if you're, you know, what I've heard several times, I always, we can't do this to the golf course because it will impact, impact the contract, you know, they'll lose money. Then why did we write the contract that way? We're going to, they're, they're basically telling us, we're going to run your course into the ground because we're never going to let you do anything. And I, I can't believe they, they would do that. You know, I think there's the thing, there's probably ways around it. You could have said, we're going to shut down the back nine, you're going to lose X amount of money, here's your, here's your, you know, revenue for that, we'll cover that, or however you wanted to do it, you know? You know, and the guys out there, they're, you know, putting in an irrigation system and, you know, and I don't know nothing about irrigation, but, you know, I would have done a pipe and put in all the laterals to get sprinkler heads up, but they're going to go through, they dug it all up, and then now, whenever, they're going to come back and dig it all up again and put all the ladders in for the sprinkler heads, you know? So I don't know if that's the best way to do it. But again, I'm not the expert in that. The city is not the expert in that. These guys are that do this stuff, maybe that makes the most sense. But like I say, if you could show us something that a management company has, you know, other, besides GNL, you know, because that, you know, they're, they're going to have to bid it too, but we'd like to see some other ones. Because if we bring this to the city, you know, to the council and say, here's your thing, we're going to make, you know, we're going to break even, we're going to do all this. And whereas, you know, GNL, this is what their numbers were, and see, we're not, they're going to vote, yep, the city's going to run the course. And I don't think that's what people here want. They want to say, what was our alternative? What was, you know, whoever, Toro or whoever, somebody else can run it, because we have, you know, all sorts of, you know, companies around the country that know how to run golf courses, and a lot of municipalities do it. We want to see them. We want to see somebody else's. Thank you.
Thank you. So to kind of touch on, so this, this whole thing started, we were just trying to show what our proposal was, and so it's kind of, it's kind of taken another turn. The, it is supposed to go to commission on June tenth. So this is, you know, we were trying to hurry up and get this in. We had a lot of people tell us they couldn't make it because it was league night, and this was our only available date. So, and I'm trying to remember what else I was gonna.
No, we cannot have a management companies come in and present something that is against procurement laws, that goes into collusion. I would love to. The mayor has asked that as well. We cannot do that. Unfortunately, what happens is if we have to put it out to bid, and the sale bid come in, and then they, we can, usually what happens is procurement, or the purchasing offices will get those bids and make sure they qualify. And for this instance, we don't do this all for everything, but for this instance, we would ask them to present their proposal in front of commission if that's the direction that they go. But unfortunately, procurement restricts us from allowing them to come present before we actually take the bids.
Also, I'd like to say, every, lots of folks bring up the Cookie Factory and the Rocket Fund Center. So, not my division, and also happened long before I was here. I come from a whole different background, and I'm not from Alamogordo. I came here, they hired me because they thought I did a good job where I was at. And so I have a different perspective on things. I am about making recreational opportunities for as many people as we can. I'm about improving the recreational opportunities that we already have. So, first thing I, first thing I had to do when I got here was try to keep the golf course alive and began the nationwide hunt for a golf course superintendent. Grant Dalps actually helped me immensely with that and gave me lots of pointers in our recruitment process, and he actually helped interview. So, you know, I, we have, it's a whole new sheriff in town. Stephanie wasn't here when that contract was written, or well, at least not in her position. I wasn't here when that contract was written. I've already, you know, we've already talked about it. The next contract is going to be, if there's another contract, it's going to be a lot tighter, just so that we, we have that wiggle room. So I'm just putting that out there. So, but it, it is, we are dealing with the, you know, the sins of our forefathers in this situation. And it's really hard to make strides when the past is dragging us down. I know that people look at that as, you know, we're just making excuses, but that's, that's the truth. I'm trying to, Mike and I and Stephanie and everybody, even the commissioners are trying to mop up a lot of things that happened before any of us were in these positions. And so we're trying to make, just make things better. So I am not sure who was standing there first. Okay.
Howdy, folks. So full disclosure, I'm actually her assistant. So I don't know how, like, unbiased you're going to take me, but as a longtime resident of Alamogordo, I've been here since two thousand five or so. I'm not a golfer. I don't golf. But I will say, I've never really had too much exposure to golf while being here. I'm sure if I had lived closer to the golf course, that may have been a different story. But I came up here to kind of speak on Mike a little bit here and talk about his tenure as a superintendent here with the city since he's been here, since August of two thousand twenty-three. Before then, I knew nothing about golf courses. I didn't, I wasn't a huge proponent for golf for golf courses in general. Kind of thought they just kind of took up space, whatever the situation might be. I will say, since working here, especially with Mike, I, my entire perspective has been completely changed. I now understand how important golf courses are. And I can tell you, just from my own personal experience working with Mike, he's got such an intense passion and knowledge when it comes to the golf course. It really pains me when people say that it was like his responsibility that the golf course was failing. It's, it was because of Mike, I think the golf course is succeeding now. Before him, like Bindi said, we were out of a superintendent for quite a few months. I think it was a failing golf course at that point in time, just the condition itself, not the pro shop or anything like that, but the condition. It was really, really rough. And I think because of Mike and what he did and his expertise, we still have a golf course. I just wanted to put that out there. I think it's really important to, to recognize how, you know, where we stand now and the fact that we are able to still play golf as it stands because of Mike and his expertise with maintenance. Anyways, thank you so much.
I did not pay him for that, by the way.
Well, I'm going to change the little thoughts in this. I've been playing golf since I was five years old. Started playing at Rear Round Country Club. I've been, my father was a member at Alto, I played up there years. I played a lot of different courses from Levington to memberships all over. To let you all know what Alamogordo I've seen here that I've never seen anywhere else in the state, is we have a group of golfers between twenty every week to fifty golfers a week that travel all over the state of New Mexico to play in golf court tournaments. And that's a lot. Nobody else, there's not a club anywhere else in New Mexico that does that. That's the golfing that we have in Alamogordo. When we travel everywhere, the top ten spots are always New Mex, Alamogordo golfers. And they are always winning because of the golfing that we have here. It's not just, oh, by the way, we go out there and play. It's not because there's something organized at this golf course. And that is something that is not anywhere else in the state of New Mexico. You can't find it. Crusus is now starting it. Because of the golf course condition, there's thirty of us that go to Crusus once a month to play in that golf club. There's golf clubs that are modeling after what he put here. I'm not saying advocating for all of it. I'm just saying, the people in this room and the people that play golf in Alamogordo travel because we can't. We play in more golf tournaments than probably any golf, you know, course in the state of New Mexico because we travel to Albuquerque, we travel to Santa Fe, we travel to Farmington, we've traveled to Texas, we travel to Arizona. We travel everywhere. And that's the part of what we have organized here in Alamogordo. So it's not all bad, but also that's because of the course was in such great condition. And if we don't have that course in great condition, we're all going to leave. Because we will travel, because we travel every Saturday and Sunday for the last two months. And we will do that for the rest of the summer. It's not what we want to do, but we also want, we don't mind paying sixty, eighty, hundred dollars to go play golf. I mean, we're go, could go to Raidmakers and play on Sunday for a hundred and fifty dollars. But we do that because of that. Because we're going to go play a good course. But what I go back to, it's this group that started that. And if we don't keep it going, Alamogordo's going to lose a lot of golfers. And I thank you for that.
Thank you. You're next.
Howdy, y'all. Thank you all for showing up. This has been really cool. Thank you, Bindi, for putting all this time and effort and, and also Stephanie and Mike into preparing this so that we can have this conversation, right? Even if it's difficult, you know, even if we're at odds with some of the things here. One of the things that I want to bring to the table here is that we have twice the rate of poverty here. We have thirty-seven point six percent of our youth out or below poverty. And we have to justify using so much of our budget for this golf course to them, right? Now, what we can do, I think, is if we get it under city management, at least initially, right, with the stewardship of some of the professionals that we have here, to bring in some of these programs for after hours, programs for when things are under maintenance, we can get things done faster, right? We can actually get people that are not in this demographic out there, right, which would introduce folks to golfing. Folks that normally would not be able to or could not go out there. I think that's extremely important for the future of the golf course, for the future of Alamogordo as well. Because if we can get that stuff going, generate revenue in golf courses off hours, right, reinvest that stuff, have more leisure activities for the entire community, okay? That, that would be, God, I'm getting a little shaky up here. But that would be so, so cool to see. And it would be something that I think, I think would benefit Alamogordo as far as like bringing folks in here as well. Having a municipal golf course with great activities, fun activities, diverse activities, and, and free to, you know, partake in, or at least very low cost. And then we would also be able to get more military families out there as well. Because if, again, if we look around the room, there's maybe about a hundred people here out of what, thirty-one, thirty-two thousand in our, in our community. The reason why it's just a hundred golfers here, for the most part, is because most of the other folks don't golf. If we brought other activities there through the city, we would actually have a lot more support. And we'd be able to have that green, green, green grass, you know, because we'd have money for it. Anyway, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I won't keep it long. I just got a couple of quick comments. First of all, that presentation that I saw was absolutely a city of Alamogordo against Grant Dalps' presentation. I didn't agree with a lot of it. I think a lot of this stuff is skewed. A couple of things to keep in mind when we go to vote on this deal is, should this transition to the city, our restaurant shuts down, and the city takes six months to a year for another restaurant to come in, build an RFP, put it out to bid, do that, we lose a lot of that. GNL Golf, on a personal level, has developed a couple of the top golfers in the state right now at a fee of zero to me. They have put a lot of time and effort into our kids in our community. And I know you made a comment to bring in more kids out there. But our high school golf program is, is very prominent right now. And it is one of the only boys' sports in our high school that placed in state this year. So there's a lot behind that. And a lot of that is kudos to Grant and Jason and Lori and their staff out there. There's a lot, a lot of things that we're presenting up here that's going to cost the city a lot of money. And we have no way, we've had, I don't think there's proof other than saying we can apply for some grants to how we're going to get that money, right? So we've got all this, this revenue increase, and we've got these new nets around the, the driving range, and we've got top golf, all this stuff. Well, that's millions of dollars. And where's it going to come from? And I don't think that's sustainable here because of our small community. It's just, there's a lot of things that I don't think are being thought about that's, that's going to be detrimental to the golf community and the area and the restaurant and everything. I think that's all I've got right now. Thank you, Grant.
Thank you.
I had told everybody I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but I'm sorry, I, I felt like the comments made about trying to get people more involved with the golf course were insulting Grant. What was the charge for the kids' junior league for last year? Zero. So there are so many different programs that GNL Golf, Grant, Jason, the previous shop, or, you know, pros that have helped besides those two that have been there for so long, that have done to invest in our youth and our young people, that I don't think are, are known maybe so much by those that are not wanting to get involved in golf. But I'm a member of Alto currently. The, the golf lessons that Grant puts on for like beginners and, and some of the stuff that he does at low cost stuff and all of that, that's trying to get young people and stuff, in our community, we don't see at other golf places. And that's some of what Mr. King brought up earlier. We don't see that community, and we don't see that. And, and to say that Grant has not done, gone above and beyond to not only invest in our young people, but also try to grow the game, I think is insulting. And I think if anybody has ever, that has from any demographic, has ever wanted to walk out there and learn to play the game of golf, money has never been an issue in terms of the learning the game. Grant, I have seen him donate clubs. I still have a four wood, he probably doesn't even remember this, but when I was growing up, I couldn't afford clubs. And I had, I needed a driver, but I couldn't hit a driver to keep it in the yard. And so he had a four wood, a Callaway Great Big Bertha four wood, that I still have to this day in my bucket of clubs. And he let me play that, and I played it all of my sophomore and my junior year, and that's what I hit off the tee. And he never once charged me a dime for that. And after I'd saved up some money, I even offered to pay for it, and he told me I could just keep it. So to say that Grant and GNL Golf haven't gone above and beyond to try to make golf as inclusive and invest in the young people, no matter their ability to pay, I think is insulting.
Okay, well, first, we never said that they didn't. We just, all we were talking about is creating new programming, additional programming. GNL Golf has done fantastic job developing the game of golf in this town. And we definitely do not deny that. If it wasn't If it wasn't for them, you know, golf would not be what it is. He's created a, a great group of golfers, and we are not trying to take that away from him. And again, I'm sorry you feel that we are picking on G and L Golf. But the reality is, is again, their contract is coming to an end, and we're looking at other options going forward. And that's, that's how this all started, and that's what this is about.
Good evening, everybody. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jake Bowles. I'm a lifelong resident of Almagordo. I just wanna say a couple of things. Mayor, Commissioners, I'm glad you're here. I know the city staff's worked hard on all this. Golf courses cost money. They don't have a history of making money, especially public ones. However, it is a huge asset to our community. I'm not a lifelong golfer. I mean, I used to drive by it, about eight years ago I started golfing. It's a good time, there's important people there. So it is a huge asset to our city, and our biggest asset at our golf course is the management currently. That's one thing we have going for us. And I understand, I've heard all the, you know, all the responses, I understand procurement laws, things are gonna change. Another point I wanna make is, I used to go lobby in DC for our community, and stuff like golf courses is huge when Brack, stuff like Brack comes around. So I just want everybody to remember that. Restaurant margins are tight. I'm in the insurance business, I have a lot of clients that are in the restaurant business. I don't see that doing well in the future. I know it's gonna be a struggle, but I just say I don't have high hopes, I don't see the city making any money off of it. I don't know how a restaurant can charge ten percent more just so the city can make a little and increase revenue or business. I don't think our city has a strong history in running retail establishments. I love our city. I'm a hundred percent behind our city. Our city staff, Commissioners, they come and go, a bunch of us don't. I've been here three generations. If the golf course sucks, I'm gonna go to Alto with Josh. There's a lot of people that see that, well, I mean, we're competing. I, I added it up the other day, there's thirteen golf courses probably within an hour and a half, so we are competing. Everybody doesn't use the golf course, but the people that do are important. Talk to management at the hospital. Recruiting in Almagordo is, for professionals, is very tough. Things like a quality golf course are very important. I know a state tournament here would be great, but the biggest concern is the quality of our golf course long-term. We need some continuity. And city, if we have the city running it, I know you guys, you might do a great job. I'm not, I'm not saying you won't, but our city doesn't have a good history of keeping management. That's all I can say. Commissioners come and go, so it's a huge concern to me. I think that's all I have, but I wish it the best, wish you all the best, just I hope the, when the Commission votes, I hope they take a hard look at the facts and what's there.
Thank you. So the issue of continuity came up in our last meeting as well. If this were to go in-house, one of our first things would be to create a master plan, and there would be heavy public input into that as all master plans have. And that is, that, that is the document that makes, holds the city accountable to, to reach those goals and to make those things happen. So, and as I said before, somebody asked, how, how do we make sure that the master plan gets followed? We have a very dedicated group of golfers, and I'm absolutely certain that no matter who is a Commissioner or a Mayor, they will never, ever, ever, ever let them forget that there is a master plan for that golf course. So that's, that's, that's our continuity plan. That's, that's how we, that's how we maintain continuity. That is why cities and municipalities do master plans. Senator Griggs, I'm gonna make you come to me, so you're on camera.
You know, thank everybody once again for, for coming out, and I think everybody here realizes that I'm fairly partial to municipal government. You know, I spent twelve and a half years on the city commission, then I spent twelve years up in the New Mexico Senate, and those guys up there know that I'm partial and supportive of local government. Local government's charged with providing you the best value for your tax dollar. And so I say that as, as value, meaning that whether this is in-house or contracted out, what's the best value for the community? Not necessarily what's the cheapest, but what's the best value? So I think it's important when the Commissioners look at everything they look at, to keep that in mind as they, as they go forward. Now, I think we, and, and Mr., Mr. Madam Mayor, I'll tell you, since you're the only one I see right at the moment, in your, in your slide up there that talked about revenues and expenses, there's one year, 2023, that is way different from every other year. And I don't know what happened in 2023, but something obviously, obviously did. That's included in the average of what the subsidy is. And so I think, see, it's seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, as I believe, he was right there, subsidy amount in, in 2023, you, yeah.
In 2023, the reason the subsidy is high is that is actually the year we bought equipment. So that, that's not paying, and you can see that that's not all paying the, the contractor, that's actually, we bought some mowers that year, and they're, they're really expensive.
And, and I appreciate that, because that's the, that's one of the questions the Commission needs to ask you as well, when they look at that, that slide, because I honestly think you need to take 2023 out of your numbers and come up with what your balance is normally, and what happened there is different than the other years. I know for a fact that I funded some mowers as well, so I know that happened, that you didn't spend your city cash dollars on. And I want to tell you all too, I want to tell you that while I provided the majority of the capital dollars from the state that the city has to do this project, Representative Block participated, Senator Burt participated, and I know you're gonna like the next one who participated, but Governor Michelle Lujan-Grisim participated in your golf course as well. So you need to keep her, and you can be mad at her for a lot of other things, but you can't be mad at her for this. So she was very, very helpful. But when I want to go back a little bit quickly and talk about, about value, when I was on the, on the Commission, we had the discussion about whether or not to, to allow the wastewater treatment plant and the water, water department to come back under the city. It had been handled by Severn Trent, and we brought it back under, under the city at some, some point, whether we did it or it came right after that, I don't, I don't recall. And you can make your judgments about whether or not Severn Trent was better or the city was better. Make your judgments on who cost more, who didn't. But there's benefits to both, and it's up to the city, it's up to y'all, it's up to the Commission to evaluate those each and every opportunity they get. One of the challenges that the golf course has, whoever's in charge, is the quality of the water they're getting from the wastewater treatment plant. And so if that water can be better, it benefits the golf course, it benefits the parks, it benefits the schools. It's a very positive thing. That's not a golf course expense, that's a city and a water department expense. But those are things that can be beneficial to everybody, and I believe that stuff that, whether it's, whether it's in Belinda's purview or not, it's the type of thing that can really help whoever's in charge, whether Michael, Michael's running the whole thing or Michael's just running the, the party he's doing right now. It's important that we find the best water quality we can. And it's up to the Commission to make sure that the water folks are doing the job they need to do, or to provide you with the best value, the best bang for your buck. And so I appreciate, again, I, I got to talk about this the last time, but I appreciate you all doing it, because I think it's important. But I also think that there's some, there's some issues in the numbers, and I think the Commission needs to be sure that they ask you the questions they should ask to get the answers they need to make the proper evaluation. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Senator. So Senator Griggs said if we take out 2023, it would change the numbers, and it would. But if we also took out the lowest one, obviously that's kind of the anomaly, because it is a year that we're not very far in arrears. Actually, we're not in arrears at all, which would be 2021. So we were ahead fifty-six thousand, so if we took out the two anomalous years, the five-year average would actually still be exactly the same, or very close to the same. What's that? Oh, oh, and just, just so you know, that our subsidy for 2025, or fiscal year, or 26, is eight hundred thousand dollars, so. Does anybody else have any questions? Oh, the next Mr. Ray, oh.
I don't think I'm gonna say anything that ninety percent of you aren't thinking, but there's a couple of bottom lines to this deal. I mean, one, I appreciate, I, I got to say with you, and I'm super thankful, appreciative, respectful of everything you guys did, it's probably one of the better things I've seen the city research put together, so I give you kudos for that. However, there's nothing a federal, local, state government can do that a private, proper, private citizen or party or management group can do, that's just the bottom line. We're incentivized, we carry all the risk, we carry all the liability, we carry all the incentive and success, and, and that just needs to be thought about by the Commissioners and stuff, and, and that's just really important in this deal. And then it's, for me, the city subsidizes everything, so the point being made about this subsidy of everything is every park in town, the recreation center, and that's without going to the past, the city subsidizes everything. I think they owe it to subsidize this to some degree. I know we can get off on a lot of tangents here, so I'm trying to keep this short, but this golf course does immense amount for this community. We don't have anything else around here, we're finally getting some other stuff going, yes, but it's just important to note that, yes, we buy mowers for other stuff, yes, we buy stuff, everything. We need to recognize what this golf course does, what it, you know, what it brings and who it brings in and what everybody says, but just realize that there's only, these management groups and stuff can run stuff like no city, no government, no anything can, and that's just something I wanted to reiterate to the Commissioners back there, and hopefully they'll take into consideration when it comes time, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't need that, folks. I don't need that. I think everyone can hear me, I was in the last meeting, I voiced my opinion, talked my head off. But anyway, the reason I talk so loud is because I've forty years lived by a cheap metalworker. I did HPAC for forty years. I've been in loudest conditions that anyone could ever imagine. Point is, I moved from Denver, Colorado to here because I've seen the greatest place in the world are golf courses. I fell in love with it. I, I was in heaven. I, I, I've been playing for forty-five years. I, my first thirty years of playing, I probably played ten, fifteen tournaments a year. I mean, I played, golf was the only thing in my life. I mean, I had to work to be able to play golf. But, bottom line is, I sold everything, come down here, because it was so masculine, it was like a dream, I was in fantasy land. And then the last three years hit, and it, it, it just crushed my heart to see it. I mean, I, I walked, I walked. Every time I played, I do twenty thousand steps a day, I played five days a week, and now they're saying that these private golf carts aren't gonna be, you gotta be grandfathered for twenty-four and twenty-five, that's bulloni, because in five, ten years, I want to have my own private golf cart. I want to drive. The reason I don't play in these golf tournaments is because it's golf cart golf tournaments. That ain't golf, golf is walking. Trying to deal with the elements, being in shape. Anyone can ride in a golf cart, but in ten years, I will want one. And I know a guy that sells them, he's a great guy. He owns, uh, club golf carts, and he's a great guy. And, and, and I, I, I wanna have a golf cart someday, and I don't want this grandfather twenty-five year, twenty, twenty-five, and then what? After that, I can't have my own golf cart, drive from my house, go play golf, drive it back? I want that ability someday, but that's five years from now. And I plan on probably doing another, oh, thousand rounds of golf, the walking. So bottom line is, we gotta get this golf course back in the shape. I, I know Michael wants to go with these Bermuda, Bermuda golf greens. Well, you know what, our golf greens are doing pretty good right now, because you know why? They're watering them! And if you watered the rest of the golf course, we'd have grass again! And I think what happened over those last three years that you guys took over is, you wanted this golf course to go down, so you guys could take over. Oh, I don't know about that. When you say, okay, I won't go into that stuff, but anyway, bottom line is...
So I'm gonna wrap this up. I'm gonna wrap this up, just so I think everybody in here can agree on one thing, is that I think for the first time, the Commission, the city staff, and you all are on the same page, the value that this golf course brings, there is no question. We've sat, we've talked about the economic impact, we, we truly believe in, in this golf course. So you have four Commissioners here, a Senator, a former Senator, last time you have five Senators, five Commissioners, so reach out, talk to them, they're the ones who are making the decisions. I don't know if there's any more value in bashing the city or vice versa. So I think, call your Commissioners, that's a hundred percent, this is on the, on the June tenth meeting, sign up for public comment. And I encourage you, I encourage you to use your voices to talk to your elected officials.
And over the years, I've been playing, I've never seen two guys work so hard in my life, Grant and Jason. They'll put in fifty, sixty hours a week. And if you guys, city guys, take over and replace those guys eventually, they won't dedicate their lives like they do. I mean, they're, they're the most incredible guys I've ever seen in my life. They work, they work, that's old fashioned to me. And then you got this drug policy thing, where the workers aren't gonna be, they're gonna be out of a job because they smoked a little pot, but you can be a drinker and you can drink all you want? I think that drug policy needs to be, is out of touch, I mean, that's ridiculous.
That, that's city policy, I don't have anything to do with that.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting everything together. Hopefully it works out. I hope you guys...
Come to June tenth Commission meeting, sign up for speak.